Mention them if you'd like.
Sure, okay.
Or it could be something else if you're involved in some project that you feel is relevant. Be welcome to comment about that or just have any other report you feel is germane to our cause, that would be great. But sometimes people have three or four things they've done in the month and other times zero, you know, so, or I forget oftentimes because I have a lot of calls and things going on.
I appreciate, I attended the Urban League dinner, the Awards Dinner, which I thought was fantastic and honored artists in our community and I was welcomed at the Prosper tables, that was nice. I felt like it was a good example of honoring local artists and I think about our connection and the development in our city around local art. And so thinking about as we get into the TIF districts and the projects, how that work is lifted up from those various communities, I think would be really fascinating and interesting. I also think that Nikengay, who is the Executive Director of the Urban League, really talked about, you know, sort of putting the murals in place and the activities in place in the north, northeast Portland, changing the names, for example, to Rosa Parks, et cetera, and yet pushing out the community and how making sure that we're thinking about art as connected to the people who are still there and not a remnants of the people who left. And I thought that that was a really important thing to keep in mind as kind of we move forward. I'm obviously not saying it as eloquently and as lovely as she did during that dinner, but I thought it was great. And then I also went on a best practices trip with the Portland Metropolitan Chamber to Sacramento and there are a couple of different things that I thought was really critical takeaway. I think the Golden Center, which is the King Stadium in Sacramento, is stunningly beautiful. And I think about as we sort of re-envision the Lloyd Center and the Moda Center, taking some key lessons learned from there about really knowing who we are as a community and incorporating that into sort of stadium builds in the future and thinking about how a stadium builds a community around it, I think was, is a really important lesson and looking at, you know, where the Moda Center sits with the Convention Center, the Hyatt Hotel, that what does that foot traffic look like around in that community? And then really having another key lesson about the foot traffic, so you have to maintain that evening foot traffic around events, you have to have a thriving neighborhood to maintain that foot traffic during the day, which I think really goes along with the albina vision, trust and other things that are happening in that neighborhood and how all of those for our community really have to be interconnected if we're going to build the community that we need to, to really have that area be a thriving part of our area. And then it also did make me think about the connection to the venue that we just approved around the Live Nation and how those are all connected as we just sort of head into the TIF development and the redevelopment of those areas. So I guess that's what I learned over the last couple. I don't know if that's a good report.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing that, that's great. All right.
Well, I have nothing further to add and Serena can provide something later if she wants to. Commissioner Slick, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I don't, thank you.
All right then, then we have the interim Executive Director Report, Luchey Flaherty-Betin.
Thank you, Chair Cruz.
Welcome to your new spot over there on the end of the dais.
Thank you, I'll be here with you all for a little while.
And Shay and Pablo, I'm on the phone because I couldn't get my Zoom link to work on my phone.
Oh, okay, great.
This is Serena.
Fantastic, welcome Commissioner.
Thank you for letting us know, yeah.
So just a few updates today. Just as part of the TIF exploration process, the Prosper Portland and Portland Housing Bureau teams have been hard at work ensuring that our partner jurisdictions and community stakeholders have a full understanding of the proposals for TIF districts that are going to council at the end of October. Over the past two months, the Prosper and Portland Housing Bureau teams have conferred with 15 taxing jurisdictions, they've met with more than two dozen elected officials and appointed representatives, they presented here at the Prosper Portland Board, at Old Noma County's Board, at City Council and the Planning Commission, which just voted unanimously to recommend approval of all six TIF districts. They have finalized the plans, reports, legal descriptions, land use filings for the proposed districts, and they've drafted nine City Council actions related to the approval and implementation. We have also mailed a super notice to more than 350,000 Portlanders, so you can imagine just the amount of paper involved there, and they have engaged in daily conversations with stakeholders, community members and partners who have had questions and needed information as this is a complex process. I'm so proud of the team and all the detailed planning, the collaborative coordination and the thoughtful engagement that has informed our work every step of this way, and I'm inspired by the work of the Cully TIF District as well as our desire to drive inclusive growth because we've tried and endeavored to do this work differently and to center community and our partners throughout the process. So as we approach the end of this month, I want to acknowledge and thank all the amazing Prosper Portland and Portland Housing Bureau staffers who have dedicated their time and energy over the past year to this crucial work. They've not only led a comprehensive process that we can all get behind, they've also created a replicable model for the future co-creation efforts and I think a new model for TIF nationwide.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have a meeting minutes, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the September 18, 2024?
I'm so sorry, Chair Cruz, one more thing, we're also welcoming a new team member today. I can't forget this. So it is my great pleasure to introduce you to Dante Posadas, bienvenido Dante, who has recently joined the Prosper Portland as our new Business Operations Manager. He comes to us from Oregon City where he served as the Right-of-Way and Construction Manager for the city of Oregon City. And as Business Operation Manager here at Prosper Portland, Dante is going to oversee our IT, our facilities, our risk management and our procurement as well as other business operation functions. So thank you Dante, we know that's a big job. Just some context and some history on Dante, prior to moving to Portland, he worked at the Illinois Department of Transportation, did consulting work for the Louisiana Development and Transportation Department. He is a first-generation American whose mother is from Honduras and his father is from Guatemala. He was raised in the suburbs of New Orleans, Louisiana, but has also lived in Houston, St. Louis and Illinois. Dante enjoys traveling and spending time with his wife of three years, Ariel, and we just want to say Dante, bienvenido, welcome to Prosper Portland.
Yes, welcome Dante, great, yeah, my mother was from Guatemala, or my father was from Guatemala too, so, welcome. Okay, all right, now, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes for September 18, 2024?
I move to approve the minutes for September 18, 2024.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, yes.
Oh, here?
Next we have public comment for items not on the agenda, does anyone, are there any public comment, Pam, no? Nothing, okay. All right, as I mentioned earlier, the public can provide public comment to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. So next we have the consent agenda, I believe we just have one item there. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7582?
Motion to approve that resolution.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you hear me now? I mean, we don't usually have this problem, so, yeah, okay. All right, okay then, so next we have the regular agenda, this is Resolution Number 7583, it's an action item authorizing a non-programmatic grant to Hasienda Community Development Corporation for the restoration improvement of the Portland Mercado located at 7238 Southeast Foster Road in the Lentz Town Center Tax Increment Finance District. And Brian Moore will present, welcome Brian.
Good afternoon Chair Cruz, Board Members, Director Flaherty-Betin, I'm Brian Moore, Prosper Portland Development Manager. We're waiting on a slideshow. Excellent. We can jump to the next slide. I'm here to request that the Board authorize a non-programmatic grant of $750,000 to Hasienda CDC for the restoration and improvement of the Portland Mercado located in the Lentz Tax Increment Finance District, next slide. This action aligns with the Advanced Portland Objective Number Two, to promote equitable wealth creation and Objective Number Three, which is to foster vibrant neighborhood commercial districts. Promoting equitable wealth creation as the Mercado supports low-income entrepreneurs, so I'm sorry, so the way that it supports equitable wealth creation is that the Mercado supports low-income entrepreneurs in starting and growing businesses and provides, it also provides a much-loved place for community gathering. Specifically, Objective 2.1, to help BIPOC entrepreneurs start, scale and innovate through partnerships, this would be one of those partnerships, and Objective 3.5 specifically to support the growth and health of businesses within commercial districts. And this is part of the Lentz TIF District and part of the Foster Powell Commercial District. Next slide. All right, so we'll talk about the Mercado site. The vision for the Mercado began more than a decade and a half ago. Hasienda CDC envisioned a culturally specific market that would support low-income entrepreneurs starting retail businesses. In 2014, Prosper Portland provided financing and a ground lease to support the creation of what is now known as the Portland Mercado. Hasienda created an operating company called Portland Mercado LLC, and so you'll note in some of the details of the paperwork that there is some back and forth between are we talking about Hasienda CDC or Portland Mercado LLC. Portland Mercado holds the ground lease for that property with Prosper. Since the creation of that ground lease and the partnership with Hasienda, the two entities, Prosper and Hasienda, have worked closely together to ensure what is, the success of what has become, I think, a very vibrant community hub, not just for the Latinx community but for all of southeast Portland. Next slide please. As some of you may know, the Mercado hosts numerous events throughout the year and even serves as a ballot drop-off area for voting. The Mercado continues to serve as an example of the kind of culturally specific small business support for communities throughout Portland. We've had numerous requests to investigate opportunities similar to this in other TIF districts and in other communities. To speak to the history specifically, we extended the ground lease by two years in June of 2026, that's of note, that was the last item that came to you. Since then, I'm sorry, prior to that, we discovered in January that there had been an electrical fire at the Portland Mercado. It was very, an unfortunate incident, it luckily occurred in the wee hours of the morning, no one was there when the electrical fire broke out, and so there were no injuries associated with it, but it caused extensive damage to the building portion of the facility. They had to close the entire site down for a few months to handle insurance and initial cleanup. They were able to cordon off the area where the food trucks are and they were able to open that back up in April of this year while we've worked with them to work with the insurance companies and to identify the extent of cleanup and restoration necessary as well as some proposed future improvements. Next slide please. During that time, Hasienda worked very closely with the tenants to help, the tenants of the building to help them relocate as well as to help folks with food trucks that were impacted. They hosted an emergency fundraiser that helped raise finances to support the businesses as well. And as I mentioned, these efforts really helped reopen a portion of the Mercado in April. Next slide. So with our regular check-ins, really going back to January of this year, we were able to navigate really a variety of issues that faced the operation and involved us looking very carefully at the ground lease to make sure that proper insurance was being managed both on their side and on our side. And overall, it was resolved, I think, fairly effectively, we had no conflicts between our respective insurance providers, et cetera, so it went luckily very smoothly. Next slide please. We did dive into what some of the restoration and improvements might look like in order to figure out what a full scope of work would be. And so this is an interior rendering of what the replacement for the bar would look like. So it's largely, this portion is largely a one-for-one replacement consistent with insurance requirements. Next slide please. This however, is an addition, and so because of the damage that occurred, there's an opportunity to do some structural reinforcing to add an accessible balcony for customers of the Mercado to enjoy outdoor dining as well as the additional awnings that you see in the slide to provide some shade in the summertime and some rain coverage in the winter. Next slide. So Hasienda will be using insurance to cover a significant portion of the expenses associated with the restoration. This grant will cover up to $750,000 in construction costs. An additional fundraising will make up the difference for the total estimated expense of just under $2 million. Hasienda has secured quotes on the design and construction work, some of the restoration has already begun and is underway, and they expect to begin the permitting for the addition this month or by, I'm sorry, and begin construction by late winter. Next slide. The Executive Director of Hasienda, Ernesto Fonseca, is here today and he is able to share more about how this incident impacted the Mercado and what Hasienda is doing to
Chairman Cruz, members of the Commission, thank you very much for having us today. Director Betin, thank you. Everybody knows that the Portland Mercado, you know, since we opened doors in 2015, really became not an asset of Hasienda but an asset of the community. You know, really, most people don't even know that Hasienda is part of the Portland Mercado, you know, they see that as an asset of them. Every time we step out of the line, you know, we not only have, you know, our vendors and our tenants getting in our case, we have the entire community really coming to demand that we, you know, do right by the Portland Mercado, which is really, you know, a sign, a direct sign that this asset, you know, in southeast Portland has become a part of the community entirely. For me and for Hasienda as a team, we have no option but to rebuild the Portland Mercado even better than what it was before. The $750,000, you know, came as a tremendous, tremendous help, you know, for us to make this vision happening. I didn't see any of the new renderings, but those are the renderings, but the colored ones, but the Portland Mercado is going to come back in such a beautiful, beautiful color palette, we're going to be redesigning, we already have a grant for the canopy outside, it's going to be another big addition, that is a beautiful design for us to integrate and do the whole thing. We were actually going to be doing the canopy this year, unfortunately, on January 3rd, I got a call at 5:00 in the morning with the Portland Mercado is on fire. The rest, you know, of that is history. We spent four months, you know, dealing with multiple insurance companies, you know, going back and forth since, you know, the damages were substantial, they released us, as soon as they released us, we started, you know, working on actually assessing the damage that happened in the main point, which was the bar. We are at a good space right now and I'm happy to report that, yes, you know, by the end of this month or earlier, you know, we should be submitting our plan. end of this month or earlier, you know, we should be submitting our plans for permitting. The timeline that was presented by Brian is, of course, tentative, depending on how much BDS takes in approving these plans. You know, we're approaching the end of the year and things slow down, so I'm hoping that, you know, we all can come together to encourage, you know, the department to help us release those permits ASAP. During the aftermath of the fire, we raised about $250,000 from over $1,000 donors. That only tells you, you know, how committed the community is for this. Every single penny of that money, we dedicated it to each and all of the vendors to help them, you know, transition into other spaces or simply, you know, to amortize some of the expenses that they were, well, not really expenses, but some of the money that they were not able to make and to let some of their employees go. It was, it was a really, really hard moment for everyone. Right now, as soon as we have, you know, everything permitted, we are going to be engaging in a bigger campaign to fundraise, you know, to supplement the 300-plus thousand dollars. I wouldn't be surprised if it is a little bit more, but we haven't really done any outreach to our community foundation and foundation partners to help us to do this effort. But nonetheless, you know, Prosper Portland has been a significant partner then, now, and I am looking forward to continue this relationship for many, many years to come. So with that said, I just want to thank you all for this wonderful opportunity and looking forward to reopening the Portland Mercado with all of you in the next year and a half, I'm hoping.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
All right. Do the Commissioners have any questions or comments? Nope? Okay. Well, thanks very much. Great presentation. Appreciate it. And good luck. It's a big project.
In a big year.
Yeah.
Brian, thanks so much. We're going to step away for another celebration. Thank you.
All right, then. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve number, Resolution Number 7583?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7583.
Great, thank you.
And a second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, then. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
And Chair Cruz. Commissioner Stottermeyer lost, has technical difficulties, and she's no longer on the call.
Okay. All right.
I do want to say, one of the key highlights in the Sacramento trip was how much everybody talked about going to the Mercado.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Well, our next item is Item 8. This is an information item, an update on the Small Business Stabilization Grant Program. And Ellen Bolus Edmonds will present, so.
Commissioner, as Ellen comes up to the mic, I'd like to just share a few words, given that today is Ellen's last day with us. Many of you know Ellen joined Prosper Portland two years ago in a limited-term position to help us design our Small Business Stabilization Program. Two years later, working closely with Laz and Rachel, she has helped our agency support over 1,000 businesses with nearly $6 million of much-needed relief. Most importantly, I want to thank Ellen for her tireless enthusiasm and your positivity. You have brightened every room you've walked in, and you have found humor through some difficult times and some hard conversations. You will be missed. I'm proud to say that Ellen is joining us today to celebrate her great work these past couple of years at Prosper Portland. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you very much for the heartwarming introduction.
Thank you so very much. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Interim Executive Director, Flarti Bettin, thank you so very much, and good afternoon. Again, my name is Ellen Bolus Edmonds, your Small Business Stabilization Program Manager, until the end of Business Day today. As we near spend down of program funding, I have the honor of representing my core team, the Small Business Stabilization Program team, composed of Laz and Rachel, as mentioned by our interim ED. We are going to present an overview, including program goals, objectives, and outcomes. And at the end of our presentation, you will also hear from some of our grant awardees who will offer their testimonials. Next slide, please. The Small Business Stabilization Program is a grant that provided funding to small businesses to help stabilize those negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. The grant assisted eligible businesses to remain open and operational and contribute to maintaining a healthy street environment. Prosper Portland provided the grants to eligible businesses on a reimbursement basis with no required match. It all started with the Repair Grant in 2019. This was originally funded through TIF and general funds, and it provided immediate repairs to external damages with a maximum limit of $10,000 per business location. In 2022, Prosper got ARPA funding to continue supporting the grant requests for repair. And during our community listening sessions, we got feedback from small-business owners that there are expenses that they needed help on that were not covered by the Repair Grant. And so in response to that, the Restore Grant was born. In 2022, a companion grant to repair, it provided preventative exterior improvements and physical interior repairs related to vandalism, break-ins, and some operational expenses, and it's up to $25,000 maximum grant. Support focused on retaining critical businesses that were negatively impacted by the pandemic and showing signs of recovery within priority districts and along commercial corridors in the city. We ran five cycles of the Restore Grant, and we have dispersed the last grant-allocated dollar of ARPA funds in August 2024. We also launched the Winter Storm Grant to cushion the losses incurred by small businesses during the storm in January 2024. We extended the deadline of the fifth cycle of the Restore Grant in order to accommodate all the applications. The last box on this slide is about the Expanded Repair and Restore Grant, because the Repair Grant and the Restore Grant was widely sought after. We were very blessed that our Prosper leadership's representation at council budget meetings had us being allocated an additional million dollars so that we can continue the work that we are doing up to June 2025, or until it's depleted, whichever comes first. I will reserve talking about the details of the Expanded Repair and Restore Grant later in the presentation. Please just know that this is what we have right now. It's open, it's available. In the next few slides, let's talk about the outcomes of Repair, Restore, and the Winter Storm. We were able to help 921 total local small businesses, and this is a total of $5.95 million. In the succeeding slides, we will also show you some demographics that we believe will put a smile on your lips today. Not to confuse, the 985 number here actually pertains to the total number of transactions that were awarded. There are business owners who apply for the grants as they incur the expense. They can apply multiple times until they reach their allocation of $10,000 for the Repair Grant. Zooming in on the ethnic identities, historically, there have been disparities in access to capital, which prevented underserved population from accessing wealth-creation opportunities through continued business ownership, and it stalled their growth. Through this program, Prosper Portland helped bridge that gap in capital access to sustain opportunity creation within our BIPOC small-business owners and diversify our business community. As of 2022, information from Brookings showed that in the U.S., 73% of small-business owners were white; 27% are of diverse ethnic identities. This slide tells us that we have done better compared to that. We were able to help 45% of our grants directed towards our BIPOC community. The next slide will show the split for Restore and Winter Storm Grants, where we actually did better. We were able to help 55% of, our funding was directed towards 55% of the BIPOC communities. Next slide will show you the spread of Repair and Restore Grant citywide. The first bar graph pertains to the Repair Grant. We started with seeded funds from TIF in 2019, and so you can see here, 66% of the transactions are within the TIF districts. It was only in 2023 that ARPA funds kicked in. We were able to accommodate non-TIF districts for their request for reimbursements. The second bar graph is for the Restore Grant. Support, as mentioned, support focused on retaining critical businesses that were negatively impacted by the pandemic and who are showing signs of recovery and along the commercial corridors in the city. As we were spending down ARPA funds, two things happened. We got more money, as mentioned earlier, from the city council, $1 million, and we also launched our survey to find out directly from our grantees if we were on the right track. Let's walk you through the survey results first, and then we will share more on how we will spend down the remaining $1 million from general funds. There is so much information embedded in this slide, and I will give you two breaths to at least read through the questions, and I will walk you through the results. First thing I would like to highlight is the response rate. We got 326 responses out of 921. We, it's over 35%. And the first question here is, has the grant funding influenced your decision to keep your business open after the COVID pandemic? 65% said yes. Was the grant money enough? Definitely no. But the main takeaway here is killing the perception that the city is falling apart and the government is not doing anything about it. The SBS grant had our small-business owners appreciating the fact that the city cares enough, that we really see through their hardships and, I'm sorry, uphill climb. Because when we were talking to businesses, it's really so heartwarming to see them thanking us. There's nobody, they said, there's nobody thanking us for staying open and we really appreciate it that you are here helping us. And it was enough for them to keep on fighting and striving to keeping their employees employed because they understood that we are all in this together and they're not alone. On pie number two, majority of our respondents are stable and thriving at 56.5%. Almost 38% said they're struggling and fighting it out there, and less than 6% of our respondents have given up. When asked about what they think about the immediate future, close to 60% are very optimistic about the future, 22% are unsure, and about 18% are pessimistic. We hope to change all that. In the next slide, we would like to share with you what our respondents are saying about the grant process. Very happy to say that 93% said our guidelines are really clear. We held informational sessions every cycle on top of meeting with a community-based organization so that they can help us reach out to the small businesses. A lot of help and kudos also to our PDX Small Business Hub advisors because they are really the ones entertaining the phone calls. And when asked why they say it's easy and helpful, they're saying that it's the additional support, as mentioned, through the advisors. Number two, it's because we really made it so easy. It's like 10 minutes. We do not ask them for any supporting documents while they are applying. We only ask them when they have already been granted the award. We were also very flexible in extending our deadlines for submission of documents, and those who are unable to pay for the work prior to the application, we are actually paying their third-party contractors. And for additional translation, language support, we are able to help them as well. Areas for improvement are mostly about increasing the amount that's available to them. Next up, our responses to open-ended questions, how else may we help you? Some are not within the jurisdiction of Prosper Portland, and some, like loans, we are able to pass on to the other departments within Prosper. And this is where collaboration within Prosper is also much appreciated by our small businesses because through the help of our PDX small biz advisors, we were able to pass them on to other bureaus or other organizations who are actually able to help them. Like, for example, even PSF, new equipment upgrades to reduce energy costs, we were able to pass them on to the Energy Trust of Oregon. They are so happy that we seem to be really a one-stop shop. Okay? Earlier, I mentioned that there are two things that happened as soon as we were nearing the spend down of ARPA funds. This was the first one. And the next one would be the Expanded Repair and Restore Program. So with that $1 million that we got additionally from council, we have officially opened our ERR on August 19, 2024. There's no change to the grant guidelines as far as eligibility, eligible applicants are concerned. It's still a reimbursement grant, and we still accept multiple applications. What changed is that whatever was popular with the Restore Grant in the past, we have added and tucked in into the Expanded Repair and Restore. So now they can spend the rest of their allocations on interior repair, insurance premium increases, equipment replacement, and more importantly, security and prevention-related improvements. At this point, we are ready to share some testimonies from some of our grantees, and we kindly call on Ms. Elizabeth Ny from Lanzhou Garden.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm Elizabeth Ny, the Executive Director of Lanzhou Chinese Garden, and I just want to echo Ellen's emotions in sharing the importance of this grant. I know I've had my own emotional responses to some of the things that we've had happen at Lanzhou, so I feel you there. So Lanzhou Chinese Garden, like many organizations in Old Town, has faced extraordinary challenges in recent years. Reduced visitors, break-ins, vandalism, coupled with rising costs, have made it difficult for us to maintain our operations. In an area already impacted by economic downturns and security issues, institutions like ours and other businesses in Old Town are hanging on by a thread. The pressures we face aren't just financial, they take an emotional toll on all of those who work hard every single day to protect something we cherish. Prosper Portland's Repair and Restore Grant Program has been vital in helping us address the financial burden of these unexpected damages. In our case, from repairing broken windows to bolstering security measures, the grant has allowed us to recover in ways that have been impossible otherwise. Beyond the financial relief, knowing this support is available also helps alleviate the emotional and traumatic burden we bear. The heartbreak of seeing something we've worked so hard to nurture and cherish and share with the community when it's destroyed, these random acts weigh heavily on us. The burden is even greater when such acts of violence appear racially motivated, especially given our role as a cultural institution rooted in the Chinese community. These grants give us a sense of security, not only because it helps us manage the immediate costs, but because it buffers, it offers a buffer that protects us from the deeper emotional strain, and it enables us to focus on our mission and support our frontline employees. And I say this because they are often the first to witness these acts as they come to the garden first thing in the morning and see what's happened. Their well-being and safety are essential for us to be able to continue doing what we do, and these grants allow us to allocate more resources toward their support. We strongly, you know, want to acknowledge and appreciate Prosper Portland for the support that you're providing through these grants to the community. I just want to end to make a point that Ellen was making, not just for Lanzhou, but for the other businesses in Old Town. There is one remaining Chinese restaurant left in the New Chinatown-Japantown Historic District, Golden Horse. And we, as a community in Old Town, take immense responsibility for continuing to patron Golden Horse, support it, make sure that it is protected and secured. And a couple of weeks ago, I And a couple of weeks ago, I drove by and noticed that one of the big, huge plate-class windows at their entrance was broken. And, um, in talking, uh, through the community about the issue, they are not in a situation to pay a contractor directly to have that window, um, broken, replaced. And so it was just amazing to hear through Ellen that this grant program would be able to step in to pay the contractor directly and provide translation services for the community. So I'm really, I cannot tell you how much we appreciate that additional level of support. Thank you.
Next up would be a testimonial from Amo Chetri, which will be, uh, read by our Laz, Roman Q.
Good aft- oh, there's wheels on this chair. Good afternoon to everybody. Uh, my name's Laz. I'll be reading this testimony from Amo Chetri. Good afternoon to all the esteemed Prosper Portland board members. My name is Amo Chetri, and I am the owner of 82nd Powell Deli and Grocery. I am a small mom-and-pop shop business owner, running convenience store located at 8201 Southeast Powell Boulevard. I am honored to share my experience as a recipient of the Small Business Stabilization Grant. First of all, I would like to thank you all, uh, for providing stabilization and the repair grants. As you may have seen, uh, our stores were severely vandalized and damaged at one point, and we actually had to board our storefront up completely. With the help of the Prosper Portland Grants, we were able to remove the boards, and we were able to build a metal storefront and cover it completely. Once again, thank you for this big support to us. I would currently describe the state of my business as struggling due to shoplifting as well as drug use on our premises, but I am very optimistic about the future of my business within the next year. The grant has been instrumental helping us to secure our business with metal bars, new glass, new doors, as well as CCTV camera systems. Specifically, it allowed us to keep our doors open during a challenging period, covering and securing the store with the help of this grant. Uh, the application process was very straightforward and user-friendly, and I really appreciated the support from the grant team, especially in these difficult times, providing the clear guidelines as well as timely communication for our grants. While the overall experience was super positive, I believe there could be improvements allowing to, us to build infrastructure that can prevent future break-ins, and I would also request providing some assistance with inventory loss due to break-ins, vandalism, burglary, and shoplifting. At the end, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart that the Small Business Stabilization Grant has made significant positive impact on our business, businesses, I'm adding that. We are grateful for the support and the opportunity to continue serving our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Laz. The last testimonial that we will hear is, uh, from a new bride. She was helping us distribute flyers two days before her wedding, Maddie Stevens, Thai Square Restaurant from Selwood.
Hi, um, yeah, my name is Maddie Stevens, and I can't look at her because it's gonna make me cry, so. Alright, um. I, my restaurant in Selwood, Portland, and we first opened in 2022, 2022. Since we opened, there were like numerous challenges, and mostly it's breaking in. This year so far, I got breaking in six times, mostly during 4th of July. I want to show something. These cost 4,000. I have more. Because we keep repeating it, um, get breaking in, so I boarded up with wood for like nine months, until my neighbor told me about Prosper Portland, and then I reached out to them. I emailed like, how can I apply, even though it's listed out very simple and easy on the website? But I was like, it was unreal. How, how could it be that easy? Why someone would like to help me, right? And then I emailed, and then I got it back in just a few hours. And then they showed me, hey, this is very easy. You just have to list out like, um, an invoice, like. And then after I talked to them, I attend a meeting that they expand the grant from 10K to become 25K. And then I had a chance, because my English is not best, so Ellen would make sure that I understand that, and she even like go extra mile, have one-on-one, and make sure that I understand what I need to do, what I need to make, I mean, get the grant. And then after I talked to her, hey, Selwood is like amazing area, it's the place that you can raise family, but now it's boarded up with wood and it's not look nice. Ellen was like, how? And then she came to my restaurant and walked down the whole street with me. Ellen and Rachel did that. And we hand out the flyers, and we make sure that, uh, small businesses, they know that, hey, this is a help that's there, it's a support that the city cares about us, the city like want to help. Because as I'm, I am a small business owner, my job is to focus about my customer, about my food quality, and I don't even have time to like see much news or seeing like what help is out there. I don't know. Until they reach out to me and make sure that everyone known. And then, uh, we went to like a multiple restaurant together, and then they look at us like we like scam, because they not believe like, like the way I did, like, like who want to help me? No one. And then we did that. She had to like wear, um, her name, and then make sure that we not scam. We really want to help people. And, um, I was able to get the grant in 10 days. So after I replaced the window, I get more collection of these after 12, 12 hours after that. So I email Ellen again, so they reached out to me, and then like, okay, we need to find a better solution, which was, we talked about riot glass, which gonna prevent, you're gonna need to take a lot more effort to breaking the window. This not gonna do anything, or even the crowbar. But that is very, very expensive. But she listened, and then she were flexible, and then now I got approved for the riot glass, which is gonna be more sustainable for a long term, and I appreciate for that. She, like, the whole team make me feel listen and the support, and there are so many reasons, so many times that I feel like I don't want to do this anymore. I want to stop, and to just feel like the city care and sent someone to help. I still insist hope, and that's important for any small businesses. So I hope that the city continue to help any small businesses, and then I know 100% that they would get amazing support the way I got, but I'm not sure after she gone.
Yes, yes. It will be.
Okay, thank you very much for everyone who care about small business, because it's, it's mean a lot, and I know in the past few year, everyone question, why would we continue? And you are the reason that we still continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. That wraps up our presentation.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your terrific work. Really very impressive and
At your service.
Much appreciated. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to add?
Any questions? Sorry.
I just want to say thank you, everyone, for, for sharing your stories, and, and it's always great to hear the, the impact. I, I live in Selwood, so very familiar with the challenges that a number of the restaurants and, and retail stores have faced. So, uh, really grateful from a personal level, uh, to see it, but, but also, uh, to see the impact in action, so thank you.
Thank you too.
All right. Oh, yes, uh, it is Thai Square Restaurant. Okay, does anyone have anything else they'd like to add or discuss? If not, uh, then we're adjourned. Thank you.